Mama? Could you go to the phone and pull up my request today? That's an urgent.
I'll call the Tuesday, October the 5th, 2021, meeting of the Iredal County Board of Commissioners. At this time, I'd ask everyone, if you'd please bow your head and lift up in prayer our nation, our state, our county and communities. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance, and I invite young Marine Cadet Sergeant Thomas Sapp to come forward and lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Please place your right hand over your heart, face the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, our county manager, Beth Moll, will review any adjustments to the agenda.
Thank you, Chairman Mallory. We do have one addition, which is to add an item under Old Business that will be presented by Commissioner Haupt.
Okay. Any additional adjustments or amendments to the agenda? Is there a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Make a motion we approve.
Motion by Commissioner Brown. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We are unanimous. For the record, I will note that Commissioner Norman is participating with us remotely, and so there is a delay of five to seven seconds between we call for a vote and when he will chime in. So that's the reason for my apparently zoning out. Okay. At this time, we have a request from the Mecklenburg County Young Marines to proclaim October 23rd through 31st, 2021, as Red Ribbon Week. And Cadet Sergeant Thomas Sapp has been presenting this proclamation to us for a number of years, probably at least four, maybe five. So he is a regular, and he's getting taller. He's got more fruit salad on him now than most general officers, and his rank has progressed to a non-commissioned officer as a cadet. He's a sophomore, and so he will have another couple of years in Young Marines. He's also in junior ROTC Marines, junior ROTC. So I would like to read this proclamation for Red Ribbon Week. And whereas alcohol and other drug abuse in this nation has reached epidemic stages, and whereas it is imperative that visible unified prevention education efforts by community members be launched to eliminate the demand for drugs, and whereas the National Family Partnership is sponsoring the National Red Ribbon Campaign, offering citizens the opportunity to demonstrate their commitment to drug-free lifestyles, no use of illegal drugs, and no illegal use of legal drugs. And whereas the National Red Ribbon Campaign will be celebrated in every community in America during Red Ribbon Week, October 23rd through the 31st, and whereas business, government, parents, law enforcement, media, medical, religious institutions, schools, senior citizens, service organizations, and youth will demonstrate their commitment to healthy, drug-free lifestyles by wearing and displaying red ribbons during this week-long campaign. Is there a motion to adopt this proclamation?
Mr. Chairman, on behalf of the Mecklenburg County Young Marines and in honor of Sergeant Saps, great job tonight, I proudly make a motion to approve October 23rd through the 31st, 2021, as Red Ribbon Week.
Motion by Commissioner Haupt. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We are unanimous, and whereas Iredal County further commits its resources to ensure the success of the Red Ribbon Campaign, now therefore be it resolved that the Iredal County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim October 23rd through 31st, 2021, as Red Ribbon Week, and encourages citizens to participate in drug prevention education activities, making a visible statement that we are strongly committed to a drug-free state. Adopted this fifth day of October, 2021. Cadet Sergeant Sapp? And the other commissioners, Heather, let's come over here, we'll get a picture. Congratulations. Thank you for your service.
Thank you for your service.
You know, you put some gas in our tanks, see the younger generation continuing to march.
Yes, sir.
They also have a request from Cooperative Extension to proclaim October the 3rd through the 9th, 2021, as National 4H Week. And if I'm not mistaken, we have some 4H representatives. Cooper Grebe from Mooresville is here, and Taylor Jenkins. If you could just state your names and just share a little bit about what's going on with 4H.
I'm Taylor Jenkins, the 4H agent for Iredal County. 4H got its start in North Carolina in 1909 with tomato and corn growing clubs in Hurtford County, and we are proud to, sorry, to continue that tradition here in Iredal County 100 some odd years later. We provide programs in STEM, healthy living, agriculture, citizenship, and more, all reaching as many youth in Iredal County as we can get our hands on each year. We have a goal of 5,000 youth this year reach through 4H. Cooper Grebe is one of our 4Hers. He is here with us today to give a few remarks about his experience in 4H.
Good evening. My name is Cooper Grebe. I am 10 years old, and this is my third year in 4H. I show dairy cows, compete in dairy judging, participate in Iredal County troubleshooters, and I am the president of the Iredal County Showstoppers Club. I want to thank you for supporting Iredal County 4H and recognizing 4H Week. 4H has given me a place where I feel like I belong. In 4H, we learn by doing, and I've learned life skills, the responsibility of taking care of a cow, and the responsibility of my actions. I know more confidence than I understand the importance of hard work and goals. Like my dad always says, hard work, we work hard to play hard. I have more confidence in myself to try new things and meet new friends. Now I am learning about the paranormalment system and service projects, and how to we give back to the community and people in need. Today is Thankful Tuesday, and I am thankful for my 4H cow family, who are also my militars, leaders, and coaches. And today, and thank you again for, to the Board of Commissioners and everybody who supports 4H and agriculture.
Well, Cooper, we thank you. Just you and Thomas, you know, just great examples of young people who are defining clear goals for yourself moving forward, providing services in the future to serve our communities in many different respects, and that leadership at your age will, you know, pay benefits to this community for many years to come, we're sure. And two different fields to plow, you know, national defense and helping to raise all the food that we need to be able to feed our people and indeed feed the world. So I want to thank you for taking the time and effort to be part of 4H and to be a future leader of that organization. So, in request to recognize National 4H Week in terms of a proclamation, whereas 4H youth across the nation are leading efforts to solve problems in their communities and make a difference for their futures, and whereas 4H is the largest youth development organization in North Carolina and the largest in the nation with over 6 million participants, and whereas 4H North Carolina claims 260,000 youth members and 13,000 volunteers, while Iredal County 4H programs number more than 200 members and more than 10 volunteers. And whereas 4H, as part of the North Carolina Cooperative Extension System of NC State University and NCA&amp;T State University, is a program where youth learn through opportunities that provide them hands-on experiences in 4H's mission mandates of science, engineering, technology, healthy living, and citizenship. And whereas 4H has connected youth and their communities with the innovative research and resources from our nation's 112 land-grant universities and colleges for more than 118 years. Is there a motion to adopt?
Yes, I'd like to make that motion. As a young man, as a farmer myself, I'm proud to make the motion to proclaim October 3rd through the 9th as National 4H Week.
Motion by Commissioner Brown. All in favor, please say aye.
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 We're unanimous. Now, therefore, the Iredal County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim October 3rd through 9th, 2021, as National 4H Week in Iredal County. We urge the people of this county to take advantage of the opportunity to become more aware of this special program that enhances our young people's interest in their futures as part of Iredal County's 4H youth development, and to join us in recognizing the unique partnership between our county and our state university system, adopted this fifth day of October, 2021. Come on up. Cooper, it's good to see you.
Good to see you.
Just right here. Cooper, get in the middle. All right, Cooper. Here, a little shake and hold. Be sure you're crinkling your eyes. And our final request for a proclamation is from the Community Resource Coordinator, Pam Navy, to proclaim October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And Pam Navy is a long-serving public servant, worked for many years for law enforcement, and has since retired from law enforcement, but I believe, but has continued to volunteer in a variety of different capacities. I would run out of fingers and toes if I counted all the different organizations that she has worked with over the years, and gets in, it's just a real dynamo, and helps make things happen. So this is a request, as I said, to proclaim March, 2021, as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And whereas each year during the month of October, we acknowledge domestic violence as an ongoing issue and recommit ourselves to reducing domestic violence within our community. And whereas despite the significant progress we have made in addressing domestic violence, statistics available from the National Coalition Against Domestic Violence estimate that four women die as a result of domestic violence each day. And whereas the long-term effects of domestic violence are staggering, an exposure puts individuals in danger of long-term physical, psychological, and emotional harm. The trauma experienced by individuals related to domestic violence typically causes an adverse ripple effect on the emotional and psychological state of a survivor. Panic attacks, post-traumatic stress disorder, substance abuse, depression, and anxiety are often ignited by domestic violence and/or other forms of related abuse. And whereas children who experience domestic violence are at greater risk for failure in school, emotional disorders, substance use, and are statistically more likely to perpetuate the cycle of violence in later life. And whereas it is often assumed that domestic violence only occurs in lower-income minority or rural communities, the truth is that domestic violence can happen to anyone, regardless of who they are, what they do for a living, and where they live. Therefore, let us formally recognize Domestic Violence Awareness Month as a public health issue right here in our own community, and to commit ourselves once again to continue working on issues relating to addressing domestic violence. Is there a motion to adopt this proclamation?
I'd be glad to make that motion, and also recognize that those who have made the request for this Domestic Violence Awareness Month are at an event this evening, doing a kickoff, walk a mile, in my shoes, bring awareness. So please be aware that they are requesting, they are already kicking off this month for awareness, and be eyes and ears for those in our community. So I would like to proudly make that motion, Domestic Violence Awareness Month, 2021, for this month of October.
Motion by Vice Chairman Neder. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. Now, therefore, the Iredal County Board of Commissioners pledge the support of our governing body to continue educating, connecting, and inspiring our community to end domestic violence in states like North Carolina and throughout Iredal County, and proclaim October, 2021, as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, adopted this fifth day of October, 2021. As we mentioned, Pam Navy is at another event for the kickoff of this throughout the county, and so we will pass this on to her. So she's freed up. Thank you very much. Okay, there are no specific appointments before the board this evening. We do have two public hearings, and people have the opportunity to sign up for these public hearings. And I've got two folks that have signed up for the first public hearing, which is to consider the closure of a portion of Wigeon Lane Public Right-of-Way located off Stutz Road, that's State Road 1112, in Mooresville, North Carolina, and consider adopting in order to close a portion of said road pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 153A-241. And to kick off the public hearing with a background review is Matthew Todd from our Planning Department as our director.
Good evening. The request we have before tonight is the abandonment of a portion of Wigeon Lane off Stutz Road. You can see it on the screen, aerial. This subdivision was planted in 1980, and in 1980, the requirements were not in place that you had to pave a road. So this road actually got paved, I think, in 2018, and you can see they ended the cul-de-sac, they developed the cul-de-sac, and they didn't take it to the end of the stubout. So at this point, they are requesting to abandon that end portion, and we have posted the property for the statute requirements, and we have notified the one adjacent property owner to the south that's not part of the request. We've not heard any feedback regarding this request. And the next slide shows the surveyed area. You can see it there outlined. That's the specific area that's being abandoned, and they are going to have developed, or they already have developed a cul-de-sac. So they'll be revising the plat to include the current location, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Todd? Hearing none. I'll open the public hearing. And there are two folks that have signed up to be heard, Aaron Fretz. And if you'd like to be heard, then you don't have to. Do you want to have, do you want to say anything? Okay, you're just here. And then Aaron Gass, same thing. Okay. Is there anyone present that would like to be heard? Hearing and seeing none, I will close the public hearing and ask if there's a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve closure of a portion of Wigeon Lane Public Road Right-of-Way located off Stutz Road, SR 1112 in Mooresville, NC, and consider adopting in order to close a portion of said road under GS 153A-241.
Motion by Commissioner Haupt. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Your presence carried the day. Okay, our second public hearing is to consider a request of the adoption of the 2023 Public Transportation Program Funding Request. And our ICATS Director Bradley Johnson will give us the whirlwind tour.
Good evening. Tonight, our request is for the public hearing for the transportation grants. That's a requirement by statute for the North Carolina Department of Transportation for these grants. The public hearing is going to be one public hearing for eight grants. The total amount is $2,115,567. All of those dollar amounts that were posted in the public hearing notice could fluctuate, you know, a little one way or another, depending upon how we see the purchase, if it's depending upon our capital and urban, or our capital purchases between urban and rural area. So that's why there's different grants for different amounts, and depending upon which items get approved will depend on the total amount once it's actually said and done. We have received no public comments or any information requested, additional information for the grants. And so we have about $600,000 of capital items to be replaced. That's vehicles that are replaced with our, by our capital replacement plan. All of them have met their useful life and will be well over 200,000 miles before they are surplus. The surplus vehicles, the money received from that will then go back to be part of the local match for the new capital vehicles replaced. I can answer any questions at this time.
Any questions for Mr. Johnson?
Now, I will make the one comment, though. It's interesting that you put all the effort and time and work into it, and it's for the future. I noticed here it's looking at the 22, 23 year. So you have to have this factored in as you plan your budget for the future.
Correct.
Okay. But these are guaranteed?
No, not all of them are guaranteed. Some of them are guaranteed and some of them are not. The capitals are not guaranteed, even though the vehicles have met their useful life. They're not guaranteed as a replacement, but we've, you know, depending upon state funding could be the reason why we would not get them approved. But the 5307, that was, I brought that before you last month, and that's, so that one is guaranteed there. The 5311 is also guaranteed, and the 5303, the 5310 is up in the air. And it just, it's, the pot of money is then distributed among any recipients in North Carolina that apply. So then we could get the full amount, or we could get just a portion of it, or we could get none at all.
Thank you for the clarification.
I just wanted to, Chairman at the pre-agenda mentioned that we appreciate, and the manager appreciates, the hard work all the department heads put into applying for grant funding that offsets tax dollars. And I just wanted again to remind him and let him reiterate the appreciation we have of the efforts you've put in for grant funding and other department heads as well.
Thank you.
Yeah, you know, ICATS is a lifeline for so many folks in our community. It's a lifeline to just do, get around for normal living, to get to the grocery store, to get to medical treatment and appointments, to get to work. to get to medical treatment and appointments, to get to work. And the funding streams that support that transportation system come primarily from the federal government as it's passed down through the state. And I don't know of any more complex processes or multiple pots of money that have different colors and have very specific uses. And it's as much an art as it is science in terms of trying to write the grants in such a way that they are competitive and can bring those dollars to Iredal County for the benefit of our citizens. And the ICATS folks that work with Bradley in terms of putting together all these grants do an amazing job, because we wouldn't have transportation on the road if they weren't doing that. It's just not something that Iredal County has funds to be able to do. So we thank you for the great work that you've done and your staff. Okay, is there a motion? Or is there any further questions?
Public hearing.
Public hearing, yeah. Any further questions or, okay. All right, I'll then open the public hearing, and no one has signed up to be heard. I would ask if anyone out in the audience would like to be heard on this matter. Bradley, I think you dodged the bullet. Okay. We'll close the public hearing, and I'll ask if there's a motion.
I'd like to make that motion, a motion to adopt, for the adoption of the 2023 Public Transportation Program.
Motion by Commissioner Brown. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 And the motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much, Bradley.
Thank you, sir.
That takes us to our administrative matters, appropriate for our consent agenda. These are typically staff-driven issues that are fairly technical in nature oftentimes. And so we presented these during our 5 o'clock pre-agenda meeting, which is an open meeting in this same room. People are invited to please come or tune in, whichever they like. And so these are appropriate for a consent agenda. And so I would ask our county manager, Beth Mull, if she would review all of those items on our agenda.
Thank you, Chairman Mallory. The first item is a request from Iredal Statesville Schools for approval of a facility's condition assessment. This was a presentation that was made for informational purposes only for this evening. Total amount of the assessment is $542,723.27, and the request is for Iredal County to split the cost of this assessment with Iredal Statesville Schools. They will be coming back on October the 19th for further consideration by the board. A request from the City of Statesville for approval to expend $330,000 as a local match for grants received to be used for necessary improvements to complete the construction of an aircraft hangar and parking apron. They've received grants due to various delays and the increase in cost of construction that has changed the cost of this project, and they're asking the county to match for this local match. A request from EMS for approval of Budget Amendment Number 12 to accept a $379,482 grant from the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services to assist in addressing substance use disorder within the community. This is a no-match grant to continue to provide those services, which are much needed, and we have realized the need and demand for these services with our increased overdose population. A request from Administration for approval of Budget Amendment Number 13 to amend the facility's improvement fund ordinance and award contract, or actually to negotiate the contract, and for the county manager to have authority to sign the contract to the lowest responsible bidder, which is Country Boy Landscaping, for the Short Street and Harold Street Parking Lot Project. Total project cost for this is $373,825, and again, this is to adopt and amend the facility improvement fund and authorize the manager to negotiate and sign contract on behalf of the board. There was construction project update that was informational purposes only, which was included in the board's packet. And then the final item were updates regarding the various facility task forces. We have five different task forces, and each lead of the task force gave a quick update. Economic Development, Education, Public Safety and Justice, Public Health and Well-being, and General Government updates.
Thank you, Ms. Mull. Any further questions or comments on our consent agenda items? Hearing none, is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Motion to approve our consent agenda made by Vice Chairman Neder. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. There are no announcements of any vacancies occurring on boards or commissions. We do, in Item 10, have two appointments to the Recreation Advisory Board. Ms. Mull, you want to?
Absolutely. We have two vacancies on the Recreation Advisory Board, and we had two individuals that had applied. So we have Jeff Cheek and Ben Johnson, and they have both volunteered to serve for the first time on the Recreation Advisory Board.
Mr. Norman, do you have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make the nomination.
Motion to nominate Jeff Cheek and...
Ben Johnson.
Okay, to the Recreation Advisory Board. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Unfinished business. We had one item on unfinished business.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to update the public briefly. We met for a half a day on September 30th as a board and staff to talk about the potential uses of our ARP funding. On behalf of the board, I'd like to thank the manager and her staff for great preparation and presentation by people they invited in to talk about the rules and guidelines as to what we can and cannot do with that funding. And we approved a couple housekeeping things that we had already discussed on, I think, August 3rd or sometime in August. But I wanted to clarify that our board didn't take anything off the potential agenda. The manager is gathering information that she will get to us later for consideration for all of these requests from our municipal partners and others. And I just wanted to say to clarify, there's been some misconception from our staff that we maybe have taken off consideration for potential premium pay that we may consider. And I'd like for our board, if the manager gets the information in time, due to time-sensitive decision there, that we consider talking at least on the 19th of October about the premium pay options and opportunities that we may have presented from our manager for our staff.
Do you want to lay that on table as a motion?
Yes, sir. I'd like to add that to the agenda for October 19th.
A motion by Commissioner Howe to consider a report on October 19th from the county manager to determine the appropriateness and timing of a allocation for premium pay. So, any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Commissioner Howe. This is not a public comment period. Is there any new business to come before the commission? No. County managers report.
Thank you. Two quick items, just to report that tomorrow is the last day for individuals to submit comments regarding our draft transportation master plan. It can be viewed on our website, and there is an opportunity to submit your comments. So we are encouraging individuals to please share their comments, if they have any regarding that draft plan before it is finalized. And also, just to announce that we still have some vacancies on boards and committees. This is a great opportunity for the community to participate and get involved in your local government. We have an opening on the Farmland Preservation Advisory Board, opening on the Industrial Facilities and Pollution Control Financing Authority, an opening with the Nursing Home Advisory Committee, and finally, an opening with the School Facilities Task Force. So if you are interested in serving on any of those boards or committees, you can find the application on our website or call myself or Ms. Anderson, and we can certainly get you that application to be considered to represent on those boards.
Thank you, County Manager Mull. And we went into a closed session at the, between our pre-agenda and the 7 o'clock meeting to discuss an item pursuant to economic development in North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11 Subsection A4. We do have a report out, and I'd ask if there's a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to call for a public hearing on October 19th, 2021, at 7:00 PM regarding a maximum economic development incentive of $240,626 over a five-year period for Project Matty based on the company's $12.3 million investment in Iredal County.
A motion by Vice Chairman Neder. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. I believe that depletes our agenda.
I have one item, sir. I got one more out of the closed session.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, on this motion, I'd like to amend the call for public hearing for Project Drum from October the 19th, 2021, to November the 16th, 2021.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Howe. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. And that well and truly depletes our agenda. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion, we adjourn.
Commissioner Brown. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And motion carries unanimously. We adjourn.